Select boards meeting, January 23rd, 2018. In attendance, Mr. Moglen, Mr. Dede, Mr. Fox, Mr. Steinhardt, and Mrs. Pendleton.
Good evening and welcome to the select board meeting for January 23rd. We'll open the meeting with public comments. If anyone has any public comments that they'd like to address to the select board, now's the opportunity. You could just raise your hand and state your name and address for the record. Anyone? Seeing none? I'm just kidding. Mr. Peace.
Brian Peace, 180 Moore Finding Road.
The dog wants to talk too. He goes after Ryan.
Okay. I was not in attendance on last week's select board meeting. I read in the paper that you guys are bringing forth a motion to have a third vote regarding cannabis in town with dispensaries. I was trying to listen to the audio file on the website and I contacted the webmaster asking when that would be posted. I did not receive anything back, so I apologize if I have more questions than what I would've liked to come here with. My main question is, who in the community has come and asked for this? I've been involved in the marijuana subcommittee for zoning, and I'm sure Doug can, he's part of that committee, so he could back up what I'm saying. We have not had a single resident come to the meeting asking for any sort of cannabis to like not come to town. If anything, the excitement is there. A lot of residents have come to express that they see a need to have those type of establishments in town, and they're really looking for something speedier than the current process. That's kind of what I got from all the meetings. So I guess I just was wondering if I could get an answer on that. I wasn't here last week. I wasn't aware that it was going to be brought up, or I would've been, you know, part of the meeting as a resident and concerned about this. So, and then as a follow-up to that, like what is the cost to bring a ballot initiative to the ballot? Like, what is the cost of this going to incur to the town to have this process play out? So, just to... Any answer? No response? I mean, it's just telling of the situation.
Well, I was taking a note. Generally speaking, public comment is for you to address any questions or comments or concerns you have to the select board. Generally, we're not, I'm not prepared to answer the question you just asked, so I took a note to get an answer for you of what that would be. And I will certainly circle back with you and at our next meeting or prior to, let you know what that number would be. I don't know off the top of my head.
That's fine, just curious. Really, I mean, what was the discussion about bringing the ballot initiative? Again, there was no minutes posted. The audio recording's not posted since December 18th. There's no recording posted, so I apologize if I'm asking something out of space, but again, the information wasn't there for me, so.
Gotcha. Well, as regarding the minutes, I know we're in the middle of transitioning the website from the old to the new, and they've had some technical issues with that regarding the audio minutes. And the minutes for our last meeting of Jan. 16 are in front of us. We're going to approve them momentarily, so you're more than welcome to have a copy of them. And you can always request those from the town clerk at any time, anyway, even in draft form.
What was that word? Thank you.
Yep. So, and again, generally speaking, the public comments is just that, it's more directed at the board, and it's usually not a Q&amp;A-type process. But, that being said, you and I have been on this committee for quite some time, and you know, I had spoken in front of the committee regarding this. We had given the marijuana subcommittee the legal opinion that we had received from the town attorney, and there had been discussion in prior meetings with this board regarding what those issues are and what options are available to the town. And therefore, a motion was put forth at the last meeting and voted on, and we voted to send it back to have a ballot question put on. As far as the total cost, like I said, I'll get back to you with an exact number, but it's not like we're calling a special election for this type of thing. It'll be an additional question on the election. So I don't think it's going to have a huge incremental cost to the town. We're not having to set up polls and man polls for the day just for this one question. It's going to go with the annual town election, which is already scheduled, and a cost that we have to incur, anyhow.
Okay, so, thank you for the response, and it's disappointing that we are, as a town, having to do this for a third time. And I find it disappointing that the three of you are going against the two votes. That's what it looks like as a town resident. Thank you for your time, and I will be coming to the next meeting. So if there's a follow-up, I'll be here.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Sir?
Michael McMahon, 30, Lauren Lane, and I'm speaking only for myself, not for any organization. As I remember, in the previous two votes, it was to ask the question, do you want to make marijuana legal in the state of Massachusetts? There was no question, or do you want an establishment, be it retail, growing, or whatever, in your own community? And I think that was the sense of what Russ asked at the last meeting, saying, we haven't asked the residents if they actually want an establishment in town versus the wide issue of the state.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chief Ricardi. It's your turn.
We fixed the chair, so we should be okay.
Let's see, let's see.
Is he the broken one?
The chief gets the good one.
Some were fixed and some were moved.
Yeah, some were moved. There's a proper.
All right, okay, they both were.
Everybody gets a little booklet?
Yep.
All right. I'm just going to give you, as a quick summation. On the regular police budget under operations, we'll be requesting $7,300 increase over last year, and I'll break those out in a minute. On capital, there's going to be two items. The budget that we're requesting to be, those items are cruisers for a total of $1,250 from the cost of last year, and our electronic control weapon by 200. Now, as part of a plan to bring that level up, this year will be the final year. So we'd be going up 200 for a total of 14,500. Two of the items in police capital, we are decreasing. The radar units, I was able to get a better price, and we decreased it by 800. Now, again, a plan to replace the whole amount of inventory that we have on hand, so we're up to snuff with six. Right now, we have three that have been replaced, two by the budget process, one through a grant process, where I drew some funds to buy one through that process, so we're going to be looking to do one more again this year, so. Then, under operations, it's just a matter of seven items that, you know, equate to that $7,300. Under contracts, we've got into some contracts with some of the computer equipment, so we're looking to increase that just by $1,050. These are all not great amounts, but they all add up. So dues, overall dues, it was 500. Chief development was a thousand. We're going to have a new chief, and we're going to at least throw another thousand in for his training and stuff like that.
Did he have that, or did you have that?
I begged for it. I begged for it. I didn't want it left.
I'm trying to transition.
No, I'm just joking.
School expense, our training costs are going up every month, so we need to go up another thousand on that item. Citizens Police Academy, which I say every year is our best PR tool, and we're looking to go up 500 on that, because the officers now, I was having them take comp time before, they're now taking less comp time and more overtime, so $500, I think, would cover that. Uniforms, we just sell the contracts, so this figure has a possibility of going up more, but we have two new officers, so I had to go with that price, and it's a matter of 3,000 on that uniform budget. Conference and travel, this, again, would be covered with the new chief and stuff, another $250. It would also cover some of the officers, also. Police capital cruisers, same type of cruiser. We're going to replace two of the line cruisers, four and seven, and we are fortunate that it's going to be just $1,250 increase on that.
That just increases the cost of the car?
Yeah. The car is included in there, but also the graphics, so.
And it's the interior design, so cages can be skinned from one side to the other?
Everything is the same, one part to the other. All right, maybe there's going to be a light bulb here or there, but it's, so we're pretty fortunate. We're out of that hump. Under portables, we're staying level on that, the same as we were last year, with the $9,700. And again, there's the electronic weapon, which is the taser, and that went up by $200, but on the other side, we also got a package for a warranty with that, so it's, we're covered for five years, so, versus the price that we had. All right. And the radar unit, we budgeted last year $2,700. This year, I was able to put an early quote in and got it for 1,900, so we're looking at an $800 decrease there. Questions?
No, it's excellent.
Overall, you think you're okay with your budget?
I think so.
How's dispatch working?
Uh, well, I got to get the dispatch.
Oh, it's in here. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh...
All the pages.
Yes. And all the explanations are in here on the forms three, four, five, six, and seven, eight, and I wrote them out. So it'll be the same, basically the same stuff that David, but next, we're going to...
It's down to the pink one?
Yeah.
After the pink page.
The next paper, please.
The next paper.
I will, no paper.
No, I don't like it.
If you go to Form 6 on that first section, it's the one before, the first pink page, it's the five-year plan. Patrol officer, I would say fiscal year 2020, you're going to need a patrol officer. By 2021, you're going to need a sergeant. For that next year, the 2022, I'm not predicting that you're going to need anything, the way we're growing and so on and so forth at this point. It comes to '23, you'll, the way the growth is going, you're going to need another patrol officer. Then to wrap it up in fiscal year '24, you should be pretty solid. Clerical, I would say, because of the workload that's going on right now, you're going to have to start looking at possibly in 2020, adding a part-time clerical person in the police department. And there'll be nothing taking place again in that area until 2023. And that's all based on workloads that are coming in, you know, between firearms licenses, records, as that increases, the demand for another person is going to be there.
I mean, clerical, secretary clerical.
Yes, clerical like Wendy, Sue, somewhere along that line.
Somewhere in the mix of that.
Okay. But both are time. All right, dispatch. We, the overtime is a challenge. We need to look at the overtime. Right now, we're at about $20,000. That's what we had in fiscal '18. I'm looking to increase that by 4,000 to go to 24,000. We're anticipating, you know, the need, because with the collective bargaining agreements, prices have gone up, okay? People are taking their vacations, and we've got to fill those with part-timers. Sometimes those part-timers, I'll give you an example, like Andrea, she may work more than 40 hours, so we're paying her an overtime status for a part-timer. Wendy, when she works over eight hours, we're paying her overtime status. So those are high-cost items overall, you know.
I know, a couple of years back, you looked at another part-time and never filled.
No, no.
So the need is still there, apparently.
Well, you could.
Well, the body's one.
But the body is.
It's the scheduling and the payment of the person.
Well, I understand.
You can have multiple people work part-time shifts.
That's what I'm getting at, so it might be time to look at that extra part-timer someday.
Yep.
But you're right, anything over eight, you're going to hit it. You're going to still hit it.
Head turnover, so they'd have to.
Well, you had some health issues this year.
They had some, we had to fill. So we had, the hours were there. They had some really great people step in and help out, or if they leave, so that's one of the issues they have to deal with.
And the same thing we ran into under part-time because of that. Hours went up. So I was looking to go up another 4,000 on that. Training, a lot of the training we get through a grant, but there's still other areas where we want to send people to training, and that's got to come out of a regular budget item, so I'm looking to increase that by $500. Now, $500 would probably equate to three classes overall. You know, they're like, so it's not a lot of classes, but we've got to have a few more classes in there to train these people. We want to have a better product, and that's all you're going to have to do. Again, it sounds kind of crazy, but conference and travel, it covers some of the costs when they have to go to some of these trainings and stuff. I'm looking to increase it by $105. Right now, it's $395, which isn't great money, but I still like to have that little cushion in there. Dispatch training, again, go up by 100 to make it 1,000. And again, the cost of training, whether it's dispatch, police, fire, anybody, it's going up.
So if Russ needs to, does this help pay for training for EMS or the EMT or the fire?
No, this is just the, well, it could be.
Or is this just the police part of it?
It could be. It could be, but there's also a grant out there that covers EMD training that Kevin is responsible for.
But I will say, Chief, last year we were at $97, and we're going over that.
Yeah.
So that's another part of why you want to increase their overall. Yeah, just with that $10,000, we only had $97. So this year, with the increase, like I said, with the, you know, three, you know, increase with salaries, it's going to be very, very tight, even with just that grant. So this will help quite a bit in that area, too.
You normally get the grant every year, like?
Yeah, we have, yeah. But you never know with the state. You got it. Yeah, we lose that.
Yeah.
That's huge.
If we lose that.
Minor equipment, again, things, you know, whether it be batteries in there or something else, there's all kinds of little things that we end up buying through the course of the year, and we're, again, we run it right to the line, and another $110 would help us, give us a little bit of a cushion. Okay. They ought to... Okay, and if you go to Form 4, this is where you're going to have to start thinking of some future expenditures, inflation order, future.
Fiscally year 20.
Yep. As quick as you boys. All right. I'm going to say you're going to have to start anticipating somewhere in 2020, maybe 2021, you're going to need a new dispatch floor. That's roughly, on to today's cost, about 60 grand. Then, the console, we're going to have to start looking at doing something there. I know we talked about regional dispatch, so on and so forth. We're still looking at talking, and we have talked with Westfield, and we're getting into an agreement to research a possibility, a feasibility study for your regional dispatch with Westfield. I don't know if two municipalities is going to make them turn for this. I think we're going to have to get more people involved personally. I don't think two is going to do it.
Maybe the state funds it.
Right, yeah.
Well, we saw how six to eight worked.
Right, you saw it.
I was actually hung up on the conference this weekend. Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, part of them?
Yep.
They didn't raise your hand, and they're talking about merging, one, three towns share one car all out there, and they didn't raise their hand, and said, well, we had six towns for dispatch, and, you know, I'm from East Long Meadow, and one pulled out, and the next number didn't work, and it fell apart. They're going back in with one other town to look at it again.
Yeah. Does East Long Meadow have a hand, then probably would do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so then the next thing we got to look at is a console. And we're right on the edge where things are going to start breaking down, and we're going to need one, so. You're talking about 160 to, by the time we come around another year or so, it could be up to 200,000 for a console. So then you've got to start considering, is regional dispatch worth it? You know, it might be worth it if you're going to have to spend that $200,000.
But then you still have to consider the station.
Right, exactly.
Right? So we're going to, we're going to pay either way.
Yeah.
Because I don't think anybody wants a dark station.
No, no, absolutely not. So, then the minor stuff, chairs, you know, they're used 24/7, and they're $2,000 apiece, so. By fiscal '21 and '22, you're going to have to look at replacing the chairs, one year, one the other year. And the last two years, I don't see, after you spend that money, that you're going to need any major stuff there that I could think of right now. Okay. We can move on to animal control. Speaking with the animal control officer, Tracy, she's still liked the board to consider a new vehicle for her. She feels that it's needed. This year here, we were going to give her one of the trade-ins, per se, but we needed it in other areas, so we have her holding off one year. You know, I told her, I says, Tracy, you're not going to be able to get that car, and I promised you that we were taking offline. I didn't make any promises, so I says, you know, put in for the cruiser, we'll ask, all right? But chances are, you may be faced with the same thing, where you're going to get a hand-me-down. All right? So I talked to her about that. She said, the cage that she would have is not conducive for good work for her. She wanted a cage that she could separate the animals. Big dog over here, small dog over here, dog, cat, you know, and pickups, or whatever she does, all right? So I had her price, I had her give me a quote on the cruiser. I also had her give me a quote on the, in that same first quote, what it would cost to have a partition. So the total cost that you're looking at, including graphics, would be $27,500, or $750.
When you say cruiser, do you mean like a cruiser, or just a whatever SUV?
Yeah, it's a transit. It's a radio.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I call it. Gotcha. No, I understand, yeah.
Are those, what is that, a front-wheel drive or all-wheel?
Like the food pantry.
No, 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 but what is it, all-wheel drive?
Front-wheel. Well, they can get them either way.
They can get, yeah. The next thing we had discussed was, we used to have a part-time person in animal control, and for some reason, and I researched it back, we did away with it, whether it was...
Probably morphed those hours into her pay.
Right, into her pay, okay? So that's what I was trying to figure.
Right.
So, anyway, she's, and I can see the point where sometimes she needs to get coverage for her vacations and stuff, and we really don't have anybody that would meet a part-time position, because she, the part-time position, to be an ACO, you have to get this training and so on and so forth. We don't have anybody like that.
If the new police chief doesn't read his contract, though, what's in there?
So.
Yeah, if he can't hear, he's, he's deaf. But yes, I understand what you're saying.
So, so we're looking to do something there, you know? It'd be like 10 hours a week, and I came up with a $13 an hour as a base, and you know, it could be 1275. I don't know. It's somewhere in that area, based on other salaries.
If you can't go too low, then you're at the minimum wage.
Right, you can't get anywhere.
And you're violating, so.
Hey, before we flip it back to that new cruiser thing.
Yep.
But if we get two new cruisers, won't we have a used vehicle that could be modified?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yes.
The year down, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Matter of fact, the plan right now is to take, and if you were to look at that, the lowest miles car that was going to come out of this deal is going to be seven.
Yep.
All right? So that would be a natural for her, all right? So.
I had the pleasure of playing with both the ones that came off recently.
Yep.
When David is done with a vehicle, they're pretty done. I didn't think, I honestly didn't think they would be as, they're not rough. I actually have them both getting a actual service of what they really need today, what they need in six months. And then me and Carl are going to go over real numbers, because my hope was to, wanted to go to DBW, still a building inspector, but I don't know if they're even worthy of that, never mind the dog officer that's going to actually need reliable transportation, you know, not just sneaking in and out for inspections. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, David said, here you go to check in, July 21st, and God bless, and he was right, you know?
That's why if one of these cars, seven, is in good enough shape to do it, and that's only 70, 75,000 miles, maybe that's better. The other thing is, police cars, they're not just miles, they're hours. And they run for a lot of hours while they're not pushing the dog.
I just meant, that's been our policy, though.
Yes, we would love to.
We've been doing that for years.
Well, because we also, pool cars at some point, we're going to have to replace. We got one that we should probably be replacing soon around the night. That's why one of my issues was, geez, you have a canine car out there now, it's two, three years old? What's a canine car?
Two, three years old. With her.
Right.
No, no, that was a canine.
Oh, the new canine. Oh, I'm sorry.
So the question is, could the canine vehicle be refurbished for ACO? And then just replace the canine vehicle with a new one? Then you're getting your frontline new vehicles for the frontline officers.
They run into the same problem, you should not be able to put a couple of animals in it.
Yeah, well, things could be modified.
If you, if you take a used car, in a lot earlier, newer used car, and retrofit it with a split cage, then it already meets, you've already got your climate control and all the other issues taken care of, yeah.
And how often are we picking up two animals at the same time?
I don't have that number, but from my recollection.
On the street you live on, or in town itself?
No, other than that street. Just because my dog got arrested once, they're going to hold that against me the rest of my life.
Well, it doesn't happen frequently, but it does happen.
Right.
But, you know, if you want to think about replacing the canine cruiser we have now, which is the Ford Corus, and give it to her, we can retrofit the cage, buy a new one, we're probably cheaper money than that $2,000. Probably $50,000.
But you got the door, special door.
Yeah, it's just a separator, and it gets, it's coming from either side, you know, so now, if she's going to put a dog on the right side, she puts a dog. She's going to put a cat on the other side and come back to the thing.
And again, that's if you're going to, that makes better, if you're going to pay 27, 28,000 for this, the question is, what would another canine unit cost?
Right.
That's really what you're looking for.
I can get another quote on that.
And could you also get me how many miles she put on that existing car last year?
Sure.
Just would love to see if it put on 30,000 miles or 10,000 miles. I don't know. I see the car parked a lot, but I also see it moving a lot.
In the back part there, the, this is the insert kennel for the cars that we have now, the utility vehicles. And the divider is just, you can see in there.
We don't have it.
Oh, you don't have that, right?
That was your add-on. That was your add-on.
Right, that's my add-on.
Saving that for March.
Just a slider, just splitter that goes.
But doesn't the canine car today have a special thing for the door, so he can open the door?
Yep.
That's not inexpensive though, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yes, it is expensive.
Yeah, it's all remote control.
They're all replacement cages.
Now, is that to open up the door so the dog can, can?
No.
Open the door so the dog can get out if the office opens it.
It's just a divider and can be opened also, but you need to use, utilize it, just like putting a sheet.
And it's like a fob, does he open it with a fob?
No, it's here?
Yeah, the divider. Does he do it inside the car or with a fob?
Inside the car. Nothing about dual.
So, yeah, so if our old cruiser was good enough, you ever, you open that couple of grand, even if you should read that number seven.
Yep.
Can we keep this chief?
Well, seventy-seven is the only other good alternative.
That's all yours. There's other pages in there.
But even then, the 75,000 miles is still a lot more than.
We're gonna list.
It is, but she's got two years out of correctors' old cruiser now and it's been, you know, it's been decent.
Right.
And that was a, and that was a rough car. It's practically brand-new.
It is.
Right.
But it's only just 30-some thousand miles.
Right. But Joe, you still, you've still gotta think about all the other vehicles down, down line. You're still at that point, still not replacing pool cars and still not giving the hand-me-downs to like the DPW director or the building inspector, so that's why we really have to think about, you know, where are you gonna put the money on your first line and then do hand-me-downs sooner?
He's a puppy and he likes to chew the sides. I want him really to wear off the courage.
Bitchy, that's all it has.
Yeah, yeah, that's on you.
That was very good, chief. It was excellent. I certainly appreciate the fact we kept the increase to a minimum.
Yep.
You know, you had addressed some of the needs, so.
Yeah, let the next guy.
I just gonna say that, yeah, he's just pushing it off.
Right. Don't we have a five years?
Keep dealing with that right now?
This has been a pretty good ride for me because you guys have been very helpful in getting some of this equipment that I brought up. We came a long way in that period of time that I've been here and I appreciate that too. And the officers appreciate it because they got some new equipment.
Do you?
Yeah. I'll let you know tomorrow.
Your last budget. What do you think of that?
This is it.
Bittersweet.
It's all downhill from here.
I ask you give.
No, 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 we're done. We are done.
They all have sailed. They're both right, that's good. They still have heads here.
That's right.
All right, that's it, I'll let you get on with your meeting.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Andy, right? Russ?
I got it all.
Now Russ knows how it's, it's done. Don't come in here asking for an increase.
I wonder what's the total budget cost?
I gotta add it up. I'm, I'm not trying to.
No, that's fine.
There's a few things that aren't included in this total package as far as the bottom-line number because salaries are involved here. There's contractual stuff that I don't have here.
So, DPW came in last week when you missed a meeting, fire next week, police next week, fire. They gave us the rude awakening if they're sitting there, so we don't wait till the whole budget process starts to find out we might need a ladder or something crazy. So, that's why they're here, this isn't, the budget is, by the way.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
It's like a five-year window.
Yeah.
Acknowledging the payroll warrant, 1-8-1-7 dated 1/25 in the amount of $205,938.64. Acknowledging payroll warrant, 1-8-1-8 from January 22nd in the amount of $1,265.03.
Thank you for your service in town.
And we need a motion for the minutes of January the 16th.
Were you okay with it, Mr. Mobley?
Uh, yes, I believe so. Sir?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Executive?
Executive? Come in now. That's for you if you'd like.
Thank you.
Come on.
Make a motion to approve executive session, January 20, uh, January 16, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Come in now. Okay, action items. Switching to the red folder. Approval to post LMC, part-time rampant tenants, ground maintenance positions, from Mr. Grinnell's, one or two rampant tenants, depending on number availability of tax work-off volunteers and one ground maintenance person. And this is from the revolving, right? So, we need a motion to post.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I sent you from the conference.
Did you use the official sign?
Yeah, I gotta make sure I get it.
Remember at the conference, there was a whole bunch of colors of those ones lying back?
I didn't notice any of those.
Okay. So, the, the next item is a finance committee reserve transfer for the cemetery commission for repair and maintenance due to a tree that decided to go horizontal instead of vertical and the balance on account, so they're looking for $2,500.
Yep, there's fence work, there's a tree stump that's gonna have to be removed. There was a grave that may have been affected and they are trying to get a scout group to remove it. They're looking at a troop out of town right now, but neither of the in-town troops want to fire with it.
Make a motion so we can have discussion.
True.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Discussion. Yeah, I, I know I made phone calls to get Boy Scouts and things like that, but now I've gone past it for several days and I, you know, is it possible we can ask the DPW to assist to remove that stuff out of there? It is a cemetery, it doesn't look very good right now.
Well, the cemetery commission is here, they'll ask.
All right. But I, I know they have limited staff and, but it, I, I just think it'd be good if, if we get, get some people down there and get that stuff out of there. Maybe put it somewhere else where the Boy Scouts can cut it up, but just to clean it up.
That's not factored into that cost, huh?
Oh, that's just the fence?
That's the fence and the stump. You're gonna have to grind that up, no one's gonna do that for you.
Oh, correct, so those are not included, removing the trees?
Right.
Okay. All right. I can make a few phone calls tomorrow, we know, I know a few tree guys and maybe you could just grab it.
Yeah, just to, you know, I mean, it doesn't look good. Spending it too long.
It has.
Right.
Okay, we'll discuss that later, we don't have to worry about it here.
We have a motion, seconded motion on the floor. Should we call for a vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Well, we get it, we just, and you're right, it doesn't look good when dragged by at all.
So, where do we sign this?
Yeah, sign it in your hand, yeah.
Item 3A is, you're still working on those? You wanna table those to the next meeting?
This is my project.
Or do you wanna take this one? This was one of them. Oh, no, this is the other one, sorry. Item 3A is a request for a water sewer abatement.
Yeah, we're, we're still, I mean, your formula has, is 100% in, 100% out, we haven't been able to, you know, find any language that shows differently. We're still doing a data search for a series of minutes in our records, public works, water commission minutes and sewers, so, and Cindy was under the impression that the person did want to come in, but he wasn't probably gonna.
Wasn't sure if he had to work tonight or not, was what he said.
So, that issue is kind of old, so, but I don't say, unless you're gonna change a policy.
Well, does he say how big his pool is?
No.
Pretty simple, right? It's a thousand gallon pool, you at least have a number in front of you. Just because it doubled doesn't mean it was because of a pool.
No, they have the new meters, so they're captured.
Oh, yes, they are.
Well, that could be, it could be the new meter and it's.
Part of it too, absolutely.
Right. It could have been a defective meter before, so, I mean, there's no way of knowing.
But I appreciate it. Now, you've made any accommodations for other people's, you know, residential pools.
Unless they put in a second meter, which then you know, which that didn't happen here.
Right. Okay. Yeah, this doesn't, we haven't never done this before, so I don't know why we even do it now. I, I understand the issue, but.
Same. I mean, if, if, if someone were to figure it out, look at the meter before you filled the pool and after you filled the pool, even had that data, you know, but even then, we just don't have that policy in place, it's water in, water out. I get it, unless you make arrangements.
Unless you change your policy.
Right. But even this one is very subjective because it doesn't have, I mean, I guess you could estimate how many gallons went in the pool, but I don't think we're in a place right now where we can change the policy on the fly for something that happened in the past.
Right, you can do it prospectively, especially when you get into hot weather and you have evaporation, people are putting more and dribbling it in, so.
And then, yeah, and then everybody comes back.
As opposed to hiring a truck to deliver.
Everybody comes back and says, well, I think I put 100 gallons in or 10,000 gallons or 10 gallons.
Since the water, okay, so he's on, okay, so it's on sewers. Oh, I got you, so, so regardless, this is what his water bill was, 379 and his sewer bill is 674. You're not comparing year to year, month to month, because it's two separate bills. So, you don't even have the sewer bill from the year before to know.
Even the water bill from the year before?
Right. Exactly. Yeah.
Those bills went out later anyway.
No, 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 but I'm looking at the 379 and the 674, going, oh, it doubled. No, moron, it didn't double. One's water and one's sewer and they're both the same. So, I don't think we can do anything with this.
I, I think we've addressed this in the past, you know, where we've had somebody come in, the same thing, a pool and recommendation for, from the sewer implementation committee was to deny and I, I think like Carl says, we, we have our policy and I think we have to go with our policy. I feel bad for the individual, you know, but there is another option to put in that additional meter, you know, which some people have done.
And, how do you say this?
And it's a one-time thing?
Right, so you put a pool in, the pool company told you, you gotta fill it, you can go to Capone's or where the guy out of Westfield, it's like a tanker, where you fill it off your, your garden hose, right? We all been told the same story when we buy a pool. It's unfortunate, maybe if he had come to us before he filled the pool and said, hey, I need 10,000 gallons of water, do I have to pay sewer on it? That'd probably be a different view versus it's already done.
Right.
So, no. I don't think you can do anything for him.
So, what action do we need to take on this, Mr. Steiner, if we're gonna take no action?
If you could yet decline to act on it.
So, that's what we're doing, I think.
Okay. So, when the resident calls, what do you tell them? We decline to act on it?
Correct.
Which means we.
We deny it, right.
Right, we deny it, okay.
Approved fiscal year mass DOR sewer rate relief grant application. Commonwealth Sewer Rate Fund operates under Mass General Law Fund, was created permanent debt. What is this all about?
It's just sewer, it's the, it's the combination of all your aggregate amortization schedules for sewer debt service and the state has a program that they like to give people money to help ensure that your rates for your sewer is not gonna go up that much. In, in its heyday, when it was appropriating the higher levels of money like around $22 million, we used, we were able to get 36, 37, 38,000, which was good. Last year's application, we got about $892.
Excuse me?
$892, so.
Thought that's what you said.
Between the staff time and our office and the treasure collector's office and the two hours that people put into this and having to make phone calls with other people, we'll probably get eight or nine hundred dollars.
So, we're behind. So, motion to sign this.
I'll second that.
Second.
All in favor? The next is a letter, item 5A is from Chief David Riccardi.
Yes, the front of it.
Uh, this morning I received a $15 donation from George Harvey Care of Linda Kleinerman from Berkshire Avenue. There was no indication as which gift account they wished us to deposit the donation. Since there was no mention made, I'm directing that this donation may be placed in the community policing gift account. I'm requesting the board vote to approve said donation and direct it to be deposited in the gift account, so it may be community policing gift account, so it may be used towards a community project. Chief Riccardi, so we need a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, 6A is just, it's just a thank you letter, it's not really an action.
Correct. I was more, oh, 7A, that looks like it's from a court. It is.
Is your name on it?
And my name's not on it.
This is to inform the board as liquor license commissioners that there's an action against one of its liquor license holders in the community, which is Louis B's. So, when your capacity is the liquor commission, you would receive these documents, this was dropped off by the sheriff's office.
Okay.
So, it looks like there's a supplier that is going after them.
What would affect the license?
It may affect state approvals and regulations on them, yeah.
Which is approved for now for this year anyways.
Well, not really.
Oh.
They're not open yet. They've paid, they haven't gotten their license, because.
From us or from the state?
From us.
Right, but this is a state.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just paperwork.
Right, so it's printed and waiting, they just have to pay for it and pick it up, because they own those seasonal businesses, they're on seasonal. Gotcha.
And then someone could technically come down and shut them down.
Yes. Wonderful. FYI.
And then the past people who seize licenses.
Oh, yeah.
Well, they normally wait until they're open.
Yeah.
Usually the day before a major holiday in the summer.
But generally, any agency that seizes a license still has to go through the process to, you know, give it to another party and it still has to be approved by the local licensing.
Moving on. Item 8 is from Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito to Chief Russell Anderson. Moving on, item eight is from Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito to Chief Russell Anderson. Hey, chief, congratulations.
Fire truck?
Close to it, please to inform you, Southwick Fire Department is awarded a grant for three thousand seven hundred and eight dollars for student awareness of fire education, and, and two thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars for senior safe grants. So I think we need a motion to accept said grant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wow, that's neat.
Couple of tires for the new truck. Item nine A, you need some more time on that one, correct?
Yes, yes.
So motion to table nine A for right now.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item unnumbered.
Those were everything that came in afterwards.
How many of them is there?
Nope, this is just.
Chair mail.
Okay, so, oh, this is chair mail, okay, so this is from Chief Anderson. Please accept, dated January twelfth, please accept this recommendation of Brandon Pranka to be, did I say that right? Okay, good, to become a member of the Southwick Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter. Mr. Pranka currently resides in Southwick, and would like to volunteer his services back to the community. I'm looking forward to Mr. Pranka joining the department. I have attached his application for review. If you require further documentation or any questions, please contact me at the below referenced number. Questions for the chief, he's here.
Good young gentleman, I was his assistant scout manager.
So don't we, do we still let him go on for a few months, make sure that they wanna be there before we do anything crazy with these kids, or we send them right off to fighter fire one and two?
Uh, no, they would, the timing should be right, that they would take the Hampshire County Program, which is six Sundays, so it's like a sixty-hour.
Right.
Pre-training, so to speak, and then the next academy would either be in July or fall.
Okay. And that's fire fighter one and two, or just one?
Depends where they go, if it's Connecticut, it's just fighter one, if they go to the Mass Academy, it's fighter one and two. Which, the fire one-two program the state hired provides is free, to be paid for the Connecticut one.
Okay.
Motion for Mr. Pranka.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Boy, it looks like he's available all the time, make sure you frame that for him later.
Yeah, right now, I could, I'll bet.
Yeah, well, it's nice, we, we put that on a couple of years ago, the, you know, when can you actually work? It's great to join and get a patch.
Right.
But we can see ya, you know, he circled them all, so we'll open to that.
Couple of blue sheets.
Uh, they're green.
Okay, so the first one is from the fire department, and this is a.
Follow-up from our designated meeting.
Correct. So the first is an inspection and repair reserve fund transfer in the amount of ten thousand dollars due to the depleted line items due to the repair, uh, sorry, this is to develop the specification for the new ladder and apparatus, um, with a consultant. We're trying to move quickly on a specification document to allow us to take advantage of possible demo units, and having spec ready should get, um, a grant allows quicker turnaround. So if we're able to get this item onto the town meeting floor in May, this, this is to hire a consultant to help us spec out, uh, that apparatus.
And is that consultant, the one we met, you know, we did, it seemed like he really knew the deal?
Just thinking about being advantageous on it too, if you look at three to four percent increase every year, being off a year could, you know, far outweigh the cost of the grant there, or the spec rate.
And is that what it costs for him to spec it out, or is that just to add to your fund?
That is a phase at this point, I think actually his spec part would be a little less than that. Once we were further into the program, it would take, include trips to the factory and the whole.
Valuation.
So, but that'd be a little bit more.
That'll buy us time through June thirtieth, what we, and then when we're into past June, then it becomes an eligible cost as a part of the wording of the bond authorization as an incidental.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So there shouldn't be a lot more than that to.
Yeah.
Because it is, after all, an investment that, that will be anywhere from seven, eight hundred thousand or a million dollars for a ladder truck, so.
Understood. So what do you need to make?
I need a motion to approve this reserve fund transfer request.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we move on, Mr. Chairman, just thinking out of the box, because of timing, might we wanna consider the article for the special town meeting in May rather than the annual town meeting? Are, are, we're not, it's not that critical.
I don't know, I can, I can have that conversation with the bond counsel, when the fire chief and I look at the language that has to be developed.
Okay, okay, you know what I'm getting at?
Exactly, because there's months in between.
Right.
If I understand what you're saying is whether it would be at the special versus whether it would be on the annual.
Right, right.
What do they normally ask for for deposit when you order a truck?
It depends, some, some companies offer a prepay on the chassis, and you save thirty thousand, I'm not sure on these. Well, yeah.
Yeah, see, so we have a couple of other things that will come into play here, Michelle's year-end financing and the payment of notes.
Yeah.
We usually do a small year-end borrowing, so the question is, do we end up doing a large one to pay a chassis cost? Or do we do that during the summer, when we get into the new fiscal?
Just, I was just throwing it out, just so that we can have a discussion during the budget.
Dealing with that, and the debt replacing debt schedule, how you ladder things in.
No pun intended.
But still wanna get on that order list too.
On the amortizations.
Yeah.
We were doing so well, all right, so we have another blue sheet.
They introduced them to me this week, yeah.
This is also from the fire department, and this is also a reserve transfer for an additional ten thousand dollars, and this is apparat- apparatus maintenance for the remainder of the year. The ladder truck has beaten the snot out of the maintenance line item, uh, till now, plus the ambulance as well, correct?
Different line item.
Different line item?
Yeah.
So, yeah, and that too.
But the other rolling stock that's, that's not EMS related has expense, I mean, it was three thousand for the first ladder opinion, and now the chief's sending it out for that second ladder opinion on the engine for, so we can continue using it.
Correct.
So that's gonna pretty much liquidate the line item right now, so you have to replenish it anyway.
So moved.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we know where we're getting with the next opinion, where we're headed, tongue-in-cheek, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's in the block right now, um, they started today, or yesterday. First thing they did was send it off for a second opinion, I'm gonna confirm what the first opinion was.
Does the truck is down there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh.
They drive it down there?
Yep, they wanted to.
Well, they need to say you get the, that's how you get the antifreeze in the oil.
And, uh, I gave them all the information and pictures from the last, everything I have, and they're, got a team eye going through it, hopefully he said he knows something maybe tomorrow or the next day.
Was that one of those companies we spoke about?
Medical situation, you want a second opinion.
Sort of theory is they try to get something more specific of the diagnosis versus, we think, locker heads, or we're not sure.
You wanna confirm it.
Yeah, and maybe.
Or see how it is, or see if it varies.
Because then, you know, we, we've been speaking about where we are, and where we're going, and where the, the timeframe to replace that apparatus puts us in a bad spot.
Yeah.
Just because it's, it could be eighteen, nineteen months, if we, unless we get extremely lucky, right? So what are we gonna do? And how do you get from where we are now, if that motor is shot, we have to, you know, if it's not, that's great, okay, good. If it is, what do we do to get that ladder truck in service or back to service, or some other piece of equipment in service to get us to when we take delivery of a new ladder truck?
Correct, which was last week's discussion.
Correct, that's what we discussed last week, back and forth, around and around, so this is part of that process, was to basically get a second opinion on the first one.
Have that within a week or so?
Yeah, I'm hoping by the end of the week.
So, and, uh, I had spoke to a few people, and got a couple of names that came up multiple times to send it to that knows those Detroit better than most, so that's the way to go.
Mr. Chairman, there's a black marker in the cup.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Peddleton.
He's already.
Okay. The next is a certificate of appreciation for Irene.
We just saw you holding that pen. Yeah, we were getting scared.
I was just seeing if you're paying attention.
I was watching you.
And then we did get it, uh, invitation, that's what the fourth.
It's behind there.
Of course it is. Second, I was wrong about the fourth, noon or two at the library.
Mike's cooking.
What day is that?
It's a Friday.
Can you remind us?
Probably Mike's cooking.
Are you allowed to be in the library?
Recipe?
I don't cook. They do cook, but I'm not.
Just make sure all of your overdue fines are paid up, before you go.
Yeah, I don't even know there.
It's a lovely library.
I'll take that.
See you.
How long did it take you to get? Couple of years at least, right?
Oh, yeah. It's on the old business, so what, does someone wanna enlighten us on why we have a Form A in front of us from the planning board? It's an application to the planning board for a Form A?
Yeah, we would like to, you know.
Would you please?
Um, the board had asked for, um, to make sure that we were meeting with, um, Mr. Skidary as the delegated or designee executor for the cove.
Yes.
So what, uh, he's done is he's working with Levex Firm and they filed to redo the lot lines behind the parcel behind the cove, so that he can sell it to an individual who might be able to get two lots out of it, and then once that process goes through the planning board and is approved, um, his intent is to then turn it over to, um, an auctioneer.
The front half.
The front half.
Right.
Right, that would be auctioned off.
So the back section with the little building back there?
Uh, the little building behind it would be torn down.
I thought that was sold years ago, that's why.
The little building behind it would be torn down, and, but some of the land there, so it's gonna be, the lines are gonna be reconstituted to get to, um, approved building lots through the planning board process.
If that's a ground ball, I have to look up.
So that, um, that was part of his meeting with me today, and because you're the liquor commission, and you wanted to know where that stood, is your update.
Great.
So it is his prerogative to go before the planning board today.
And they, they have not filed it yet.
Uh, he's in the process. Was he filing it today, Sunday or?
Um, today or tomorrow, I thought he said.
Yeah.
It doesn't touch the parking lot, you think it doesn't?
Well, it's just a matter of, no, you can't leave the cove, be non-conforming, and then these would be two lots off a public way, so. And the planning board has twenty-one days.
He already had the big sizey map with them.
Actual size?
Yeah.
Spaghetti stains, but you can.
Easy, okay. Old business, covered bridge.
He emailed, uh, Ben today, with no response.
I don't think he's heard from the other persons.
What do we do now, continue on our current path there?
Yeah, we just have to wait till we get any info from, I mean, right now, the chief has already, you know, his position is, he's, he already knows what types of apparatus he's gonna send over the bridge, and everybody else up there knows too.
And everyone up there knows too?
Right.
The four residents up there?
The report, I'm not sure if, we did not, we never sent the final letter as to what it translated to us, because we were still waiting for a couple of questions to be answered.
Are you still waiting for a couple of questions to be answered, but you've decided what apparatus you're going to send?
Send the letter.
Send the letter, please, exact, I, I would say, to let them know that the ambulance will come, the brush truck will come, the ladder ain't coming, or whatever else isn't coming.
Probably run that like Ben, because liability for the time, but.
That's fine, just.
Correct.
Start with the first letter.
Yeah, absolutely.
Liability starts where that bridge is.
Right.
Well, it's also gonna affect their insurance.
Absolutely.
And that might be a motivator to speed things along.
Correct.
I'll proof, I'll, chief, I'll proof it along with Ben, and that'll be the thing we send out, and it's gonna, you're gonna be citing the contents of the court, of their engineer.
I think, yeah, they're just gonna, it's hard to remember.
Uh, I haven't received any update on the North Pond.
No, we, our office says not, I bet.
What?
It's so small. Is that what college does to you?
No, I couldn't tell you, okay. Street renaming project status.
Yep, we're making some progress, I've been going back and forth with the assessor and the town planner, so we're at the point where, once Ben takes that information and we confirm the names of all the roads, we will be having a meeting with the, the relevant department heads and the town attorney to go over the issue, along with Kevin's department is the next generation nine-one-one, and then after that meeting, when we're done with that meeting, then we'll be in a position for the police and some of the other departments to have a public informational session with the neighborhood, not a public hearing.
Correct.
So that the police can explain to them all the other types of, the rationale and the genesis of why this has to happen.
And will the fire chief also be attending, I don't know.
Yeah, all the public safety department can do that.
Charlie?
But I did.
Charlie? Yes.
But I did ask the chief of police the timeframe for it, and this was not an issue that needed to be done immediately, so there's gonna be different steps in this.
Thank God, because the original letter was like nineteen years ago.
Hey, you're working, all right?
Might have been seventeen, don't hold me to that.
No, I think it was seventeen.
Yeah, it was seventeen, because we noted, it was no longer here, it was seventeen.
I noted it was made out to me, but I'm not sure where, where it went, when it went through the other channels of policymaking.
It got paperclip behind something in error. TCC Office Reclassification Approved Revised Assistant TCC Job Description and Second Assistant.
Yep.
Position and Authorized TCC to Submit Candidate, Captain?
Well, you have before you what Michelle has worked out the language with, um, your labor council, so now you have to go through the process of voting to adopt a revised job description and to authorize the creation of a second position, of which in return for, you're going to leave one of the other two lower level positions unfit, so that's where you are. And you have the department head and the assistant. Joe's had conversations with them, I've had conversations with Doug, and I've met with them. I mean, there were other, there were obviously other options that the clerk was looking at, but those would still have to go through the budget process separately.
Correct. I think we. That's what I was looking for.
She gave them to you to put them in the folder, for the whole business?
I was playing my desk. That was given to you, I never got it.
We got it.
My email wasn't for her bringing down to you, it was the old business.
Well, this is similar to what we've already gone over.
Oh, yeah, these are just Fred's language changes with, yeah, Fred and I and Michelle, um, met with Joe, and he went over the necessary language.
So we, we know the, the basis, and it's just, just legal counsel, our labor counsel has just clarified the language.
Yep.
Correct.
All right, so there's no change.
Well, no, he, he modernized it, because the, the language, the, the job description was twenty years old.
Right.
So he did, he did modernize that with the department head.
Right.
But he made sure that it would be consistent for, um, the two people to fill, you know, equal positions, just like you have multiple people in police, that all the back end positions, you have multiple people in the job. So it accomplishes the same analogy.
Yeah, right.
And where she is in her process right now.
And this is the recommendation as the town clerk treasurer collector, and the assistant.
Are you sure twenty pounds is enough? For lifting? I, I, you know, some of them stack.
Well, that is the format, Fred, you, that, that hasn't been updated.
Oh, okay. I'm fine with it.
That was a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done.
So that's the, uh, first part of adopting it, and then your second vote?
Is to authorize the town treasurer collector to submit a candidate.
Right, to create a second, second slot and to submit a candidate to.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Submit a candidate.
Yeah, that should.
Should probably wait or no?
Yeah, probably be better to wait.
No, we, yeah, we can't do new business, it's not new business, old business.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, so.
We just authorized you to submit a candidate.
Next.
Right, and next.
We're meeting next week.
And then next week we're also interviewing the other three, five-minute interviews for the other three.
Oh, are we?
Oh, perfect.
Correct. So moving right on.
You gonna wear a suit next week?
No.
No.
Well, you are, as fire commission is also interviewing the fifth new career person for fire, EMT, paramedic.
I screwed up.
I wonder if we bring in a partner, one?
You wanna wear a suit?
More suit. I got these new clip-on ties. Christmas.
Okay.
And we tabled the red item.
Is it just blue shirts next week?
Blue shirts.
Blue shirts, okay.
It would be collusion.
Okay.
New business.
Uh, uh, before.
Oh, sorry, I apologize.
The fire chief will be doing his budget over the next year.
Old business.
Blue shirt then.
Blue shirt.
Blue shirt. Old business.
Sir.
Mr. Chairman, um, we have neglected to address the issue of the 250th anniversary.
I thought about it, this was that next year?
No, 2020, okay? Uh, but we agreed that in January we would begin the process of forming a committee. And I would like to suggest that we send out, uh, a letter to, uh, all the different organizations in town. Making them aware that we will be forming a committee and looking for people to get involved and maybe submitting names to be on the committee. And I'm suggesting like, you know, all our town departments, especially Park and Rec.
Cultural council.
Cultural council, historical commission.
We're having designated person for.
Right, and, um, and then reaching out to the nonprofits, Rec Center, Southwick, Southwick.
Civic Fund.
Civic Fund, um. And I'm sure there's many other out there.
There's plenty out there.
That, that, to make sure that we have representation and coordinate for that year, so we don't have a.
One of these committees.
I, I, I would, I would imagine.
Michelle, could you find out, you know, for the clerks association, how big an anniversary committee can be? Whether there's any limits on the membership of the community's anniversary committee?
And do we serve cake and ice cream or just cake? Spoil your ass.
Burgers, these dogs, we're going big for this.
Ice cream cake, yeah. But, uh.
Well, no, because I can remember when I was, um, there was a committee and when I was the president of the Rotary Club.
I'm scared to do that.
Would you just do it?
We had several events during the year, we had Hardest Moon Dance, there were several events the community held throughout the year. You know, once a quarter or something, just so that they could recognize that it was a, it wasn't just a single event.
Correct.
A series of events.
Festivities throughout the season.
Like, and there could be a theme at the, at the parade that happens.
Right.
A flow.
Raised the new banners throughout Main Street.
A root beer.
Right.
Sacrifice somebody.
We're still selling stuff, right?
Yeah, I don't know if, I have to go back and look, I don't know if it's 100 years or 150 years or something.
Last, uh, the two, 225th.
I would say if it was 100 or 150, those are really older records, we're doing 250.
That was the, that was the 225th, this is the 250th.
Right.
I was around for that one too.
I'll get one.
And in addition to that, Mr. Chairman, uh, our legislators have told me that they worked on getting monies for our sister city of Westfield. For, who is gonna be celebrating their.
Next year, right?
Next year, their 300th anniversary. And I was told by one of our legislators that he would assist in helping us with funding. And that funding they got initially was just for the committee to use for planning purposes, so, um.
Well, now that there's big money involved.
Yeah.
I really think we need somebody to spearhead this on behalf of this board.
Absolutely, Mr. Moldman.
Bear in mind.
Any thoughts? You do have a thought?
Sir, can I interrupt?
Oh, no, yeah, I'm waiting for you.
Great, I'd like to make a motion that we, probably Russ Fox would be the best suited at this point in time. Since you're chairman now and burnt out and gonna be a clerk shortly.
Very shortly.
Take the reins as chairman, um, I, I think, you know, that middle guy, that go-to guy, always smiling. I would like to make a motion for Russ Fox to be heavily involved in creating such committee. Well, it's dusty in here. I'll second the motion. Alright.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What I'm saying.
Now, so in follow-up to that, remember we did get an legal opinion or an auditor's opinion, we could use the money left over from the 225th.
Correct.
And then town meeting just made an appropriation this year of the last budget.
Correct.
And I believe it's your intent to do one in the next fiscal year, 19 budget.
Correct.
Along with the efforts of the legislative delegation to secure an earmark in the upcoming state budget planning process.
Correct.
Right.
What did Westfield get?
They got $50,000.
That's why we put our best man in it.
Yeah, we got our best guy on now.
I, well, I.
And contrary to public opinion, uh, as Ronald Reagan said, he was not at the 100.
I would just like to thank the board for giving such confidence in someone who is just a clerk.
Uh, we, we, we see good things in you.
We see big things for you next year, you might be moving up.
I can't wait to write these minutes.
We will definitely have the audio minutes fixed for next week.
Yes.
Okay, any other old business?
Uh, no. Got new business?
Okay, we'll move on to, does anyone have any new business?
Yes, tomorrow I'm gonna be doing a walk-through with the library with prospective contractors for the carpeting and painting project. For the interior.
Which is already budgeted.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Just for clarification, we're talking about the new library.
Yes.
Not the old library.
Good night, ladies.
If, if the CAO is done, I have some new business.
By all means, sir.
Alright.
Apologize for the interruption.
At the MMA meeting, uh, you and I attended, and I, actually I attended twice. Meetings concerning policy on social media for employees and elected and appointed officials. And I would like to have that placed on the agenda, our, our action, one of our action items. Because I, I think it's something that, I know we already have some guidelines, but.
You have a full policy.
I have a full policy.
But if you've got a draft one.
I have a draft one.
We certainly could have.
Begin to try.
Labor council examine that if you want, I could just have that done now, if you just give me the draft, I.
Okay.
Labor council, I get several different members of labor council will be rotating through the next couple of weeks.
And, and what the, one of the seminars I attended, they talked about the fact that the fire department probably has a policy, the police probably has a policy. In connecting them, maybe making ours all encompassing or, or, um, the, the final say.
Yeah, well.
But we can work that out with.
Police use, this comes as a standardized starting point from an accreditation. This, this comes through, it's specially worded if you want to be an accredited barber.
Okay. Alright, I will drop off the, uh.
So do you want to know the next agenda or do you want?
I, I, just under all business would be fine, but, uh, I have the policy from the, uh, great town of Easton and, uh.
Be glad if you could.
And I think we've used.
I don't need the other 500 pieces of paper you got, just that.
Or the paper clips, just the.
Oh, we already delivered the clips.
We gave, you got the paper.
And the moving box, I guess that was a hint too.
The moving boxes, yeah. Is there a, you don't have those now?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Very well, any other new business, sir? Great, and that, I, like, to Russ's point, they, uh, that social media policy one was certainly interesting discussion. Because there was, there was a lot of aspects to it that not everybody thinks through. And it's not just, you know, um, you know, somebody inadvertently saying something out of turn on social media that they may be, have knowledge of, that they maybe, that the general public doesn't or shouldn't. At a certain point in time, but it's usage when and where and, um, also monitoring over those accounts, so.
Case, case in point, the town of Jackman, Maine took action against the, it administrated person in their community today because of the inappropriate postings on social media. So if you can, you can go Google the NECN story about it.
And there was also, there was also a healthy discussion around, um, open meeting law and how that could be. If somebody posts something and then, say there was a board of three and somebody posted something and the other two members saw it and maybe commented on it, that might have implications for the open meeting law.
Absolutely.
Even just clicking like.
Yep.
Which is an affirmative action, blah, blah, blah. It's really interesting in that regard, so it'll be interesting to take that forward.
Right, because the policy that Easton did, it's really two policies.
Yep.
One for staff and one for elected and appointed officials.
Correct.
Because, and, and they also do programs where they bring everybody in, I mean, it's easier to do with the staff to have those meetings. But also a, a session with appointed elected officials to make sure they understand, uh, the pitfalls and especially the one that Doug just mentioned, violating the open meeting law.
Because it, it's easy enough to do, and we've seen it, um, heck, you know, even with, you know, appointed officials that may be serving on an ad hoc committee or, or, or something like that. It's very easy to inadvertently, you know, do that, so even on social media makes it even easier to do so. And that was really it. Any other new business? Uh, and Michelle left, but the, the other side note on that was it also has implications for public records. Because if you post stuff regarding the town, how does the town clerk save and record that information for all of time per the law that she's supposed to? The law really hasn't kept up with, we don't own and control what's on, say, Facebook. They control when they post it or when it, they ever delete it, if not, or whatever, how do you save that information? Anyway.
Just look at the whole election investigation, Russia.
That's a whole different angle, right. Do we have executive section this evening?
No.
So that I understand in motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in. I think he seconded that, all in favor? Aye.